Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, November 17th, and this is a Moscow City Regular Meeting that we're having tonight. And we will start off with Walter Steed.
Would everyone rise and join the mayor and council in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Thank you, Walter. And before I go to the consent agenda, I want to point out to everybody that item number five was pulled from the agenda tonight. Now, it's a single-stream curbside recycling that we put notice. Basically because our main guy is sick. So, Tim, get well and don't let any of us catch whatever it is you have. With that, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter.
I would like to pull item D from the consent agenda.
Walter requests to pull item number D. Dan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the balance of the consent agenda.
A, B, C. Okay, A, B, and C. Dan made a motion to approve the A, B, and C on the consent agenda. John Weber's second on that motion. I'll start to roll with Art.
Aye.
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 And that passes. And Walter, you have the floor with item number D, 1411 Main Street Lot Division.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I pulled this tonight was I got a couple of requests from citizens about feeling that this was an item that should be aired publicly, and I was very happy to pull it to do that. And I would ask Mike Ray to present to us, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Before you tonight, we have a proposed lot division at the old Korn Shopping Center located at 411 North Main Street within Moscow. And so, the proposal before you tonight is a lot division, a lot line of adjustment, basically of an existing 4.74 acre parcel. And the lot line adjustment is for an existing 9,360 square foot parcel located in the northeast corner of the property. The existing 4.74 acre parcel currently contains Rozar's Grocery Store, and there's also a smaller white cinder block building located in the north-central part of the parcel, while the existing 9,360 square foot parcel is currently vacant in that northeast corner. So, the proposal essentially would result in the creation of three parcels, one of 18,000 square feet in size, another in 16,700 square feet in size, and the resultant parcel would be 4.16 acres in size. So, we currently have five vehicular approaches, three off of US 95 Main Street. We have one centralized one off of E Street, as well as one centralized off of D Street. We also have an existing public transit stop and shelter, and that's located just to the northeast of the existing vacant white building adjacent to E Street. And so, just to familiarize yourself with the property outlined in green, you have the two proposed. So, this would be the 4.74 acre resultant parcel here. You have two proposed parcels, one in the northeast corner. This is 18,000 square feet in size there, as well as 16,700 square foot proposed parcel located in the southeast corner adjacent to D and Main Street. Those are those five existing vehicular approaches. We've got the three off of Main Street, two in close proximity of each other in the northern end. Also have one located on E Street, as well as one on D Street here to the south that provides centralized access to the development. As part of staff's and ITD's proposal tonight would be to eliminate one of the existing approaches off of 95 and to consolidate those into one, essentially be left with four approaches, the two, one off of D, one off of E, and then the two off of Main Street. We also have a transit stop, which has been identified here on E Street, and that's in the orange box there. Also, part of staff's recommended condition is that the existing or the proposed two parcels use the existing approaches off of D and E as the main access to the site, and those not be allowed to have new curb approaches off of D or E or Main Street. Looking at the utility configuration across the parcels, you see a large 24-inch sewer main, and that storm sewer transecting the property in that southeasterly direction ties into the Hog Creek Culvert there down on D Street and Main Street. The developer would be responsible for the relocation should the new, you know, existing or the new proposed building paths be placed in a manner that would require relocation of those mains. Also have a sanitary main. You can see it vaguely in green here running north-south. That would be the same circumstance there. The developer would be responsible for the relocation of that. Some of the considerations before you is that the proposed lots meet all the minimum lot size, lot width requirements of the motor business zone. There's basically no minimum lot width or lot size required for commercial uses within that zone. The proposal would appear to support greater development of the parcel, which is desirable in staff's viewpoint, with the potential of increased traffic. Staff's recommending the consolidation, like we discussed previously, the two northerly Main Street approaches. This is to improve safety and reduce vehicular and pedestrian conflicts in that location. And then, if the two northern approaches are consolidated, there would be four vehicular approaches on the site. And then, the staff, you know, lastly recommends that all subject parcels jointly utilize those four vehicular approaches, the two centralized ones off of D and E, as well as the two on Main Street. And so, this was previously reviewed and recommended for approval on November 10th by the Public Works Finance Committee, and staff recommends approval of the lot division and the lot line adjustment with the following conditions. The first one being that the applicant consolidate those two northern Main Street approaches, and that's prior to the issuance of a permit for a new principal structure upon any of those three parcels. The next one is that the applicant execute a shared access easement agreement, allowing shared use of the four remaining vehicular approaches for all three parcels. And the last one being that prior to separate conveyance of the northeast parcel to a different party, the applicant either remove the existing vacant structure or modify the structure to meet building code fire separation requirements, currently straddling the proposed property line, and that's the reason for number three. And with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, Walter?
Thank you, sir. Mike, would you go back to your aerial photo that showed the three proposed parcels? Yeah, that one's great. Your information in the packet says there currently is a 4.74 acre parcel and a 9,360 foot, square foot parcel.
The next one shows that one.
Is the 9,360 where we see the vehicles parked in the north?
Yeah, it would be the black line here on this parcel, so be basically right here.
Okay, so that's the existing 9,360, the two red crosshatched, or the two new proposed, and the remainder is the third?
Correct. The one in the northeast corner is the 18,000 square foot parcel, basically going from that 6,700 square foot parcel in the northeast corner to 18,000, and then you, in the southeast corner, that one's proposed to be 16,700 square feet in size.
Yeah, I don't think we had that photo in our package, so thank you.
Art, you had?
Yeah, I had a couple. One was, I was thinking about this subsequent to Public Works and Finance and was wondering about the possibility of land swaps associated with bending E Street down to make a better connection across US 95. And on doing some inquiries, I found out a lot of reasons why this might be difficult at best, and I was wondering if you could just kind of reiterate those reasons about land swaps and if you bent E Street to the west of Main Street down to better align with E Street on the east side, the reasons for land swaps being difficult.
Well, typically under state law, if you were to vacate that right away and realign it, basically the remaining parcel in that kind of northern portion of E Street would essentially, you know, if you vacated, half goes to each adjacent property owner. And so, you'd be left with essentially, you know, an odd-shaped 7,000 square foot parcel, which would then have to be divided essentially between the Disability Action Center and then the, you know, future owner of the parcel before you tonight. And so, you know, that would further complicate matters. You would also have to, you know, the city would have to approach the developer in order to basically purchase, you know, that property in order to realign E Street.
There's also some city utilities underneath E Street that would be expensive to relocate and so.
Yeah, also require the relocation of the utilities, as well as the bus shelter that was recently installed, so.
And while I'm at it, could you cover a little bit about building envelope locations and the potential for street trees and sort of the continuation of the idea of downtown further north as part of this development with the lot line adjustments that we're looking at here?
That could be cer- you know, that certainly could be a part of the development. There's really no restriction for street trees along 95, as well as E Street and D Street. And so, as long as they satisfy basically the site vision triangle, as well as the clear zone that's stipulated by Idaho Transportation Department on Main Street, there'd be no reason to say that we couldn't place street trees in that area. And discussions with the potential developer of this property, it's his full intention that there be some landscaping and trees inserted along the frontage on Main Street. And so.
I think it's a great opportunity to really improve that site up to the north. I think the whole concept is about long overdue and could be really, really a great, great asset to the community, so that's what I had.
Wayne?
Mike, you talk about three curb cuts that are currently there. Isn't there actually a fourth one up in the northeast corner where that, it's not really used, but it seems like there's another one further up?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I believe there's just the three on Main Street there, but, you know, it appears that there's a slight discoloration there, but I think that's because of the new concrete that was poured there.
John?
That piece of property where the trailers are parked now used to be Vern Chevron. And there was, at one point, you could enter and exit Vern Chevron, not only from E Street, but also from Main Street. But I think that-
I think it's still there.
Over the years, as that was built up, that delineation for that curb cut might just kind of disappeared. But it used to be, that was one of the many service stations that we had in town, and you could get in and out of it from E Street and from Main Street. And as long as I have the floor, I have a question for you. You mentioned the possibility of the land swap and the cost, but you didn't put a dollar on the cost. I know you can't say it would cost X number of dollars specifically and have that carved in stone, but do you have any idea as to the amount of money that it would cost? And I think it would cost the city that money to do that.
That might be a question better suited for the applicant, but it's my understanding that probably $8 to $12 a square foot, and so you're looking at 140,000 to 220,000, you know, something around there.
Les, did you have something you wanted to bring up on the curb cuts?
If I may.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, we're just taking a look on the, on the Google Earth sites, and it does appear that there might be an old cut, as John was mentioning, right at the north end. And on the aerial, you can see right at the corner where the crosswalk is, the city had installed, or probably ITD installed some new curb ramps through there, an ADA ramp, pedestrian ramp. And it looks like just south of that, there was perhaps an old cut through there. Either that, or it's just a very low curb line.
Yeah.
It's a little bit hard to tell in the photos we've got.
There's a car in the way.
But there may have, yeah, it may very well have been one, as John was mentioning, with the gas station. So, we would have to look at that in terms of whether or not that one would stay or could go away.
Okay, Dan?
I would, you know, should, moving forward with this, I would say that maybe that first condition should just say instead of, instead of saying consolidate the two northern Main Street approaches, maybe have it say consolidate Main Street approaches into two usable approaches, rather, you know, however many there are, we only, we want to end up with two.
Sure.
So, I think, I think that might be what, we need to change the language there to, that we just end up with two on Main Street, and then the other two are fine the way they are, unless, like John said, there was one off of E Street, and I don't know if you can tell right now if that, and it is there, actually, just looking at it, and it's a wide one. So, you would probably want to say something about that as well.
That'd be east of that bus shelter you're talking about now, Dan, right?
Yeah, there's a big, there's a big wide curb cut there still, approach, which makes sense with, you know, how all those trucks are probably getting in there to park, so. So, we may need to change that, add that language as well, that we only have the, we end up with four total wherever they happen to be, as long as only two on Main Street and one on either side.
Okay.
Well, I would make a motion to approve this, along with considerations and recommendations of staff, as well as the change in the language for number one that was proposed by Dan, to limit the total number of accesses from Main Street to two.
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion by Art and a second by John to approve the lot division with the following conditions, the three conditions, and condition number one, change in the wording, so it just says two entrances on the north side, one on the, or no, two on the, well, actually, it'd be two on the east side, wouldn't it? One on the north and one on the south, correct?
Correct.
That's what we're talking about. Is that right? Walter?
I think Art said to limit Main Street to two and didn't mention E Street, so make sure we know what the motion is and what we're voting on.
What do we have for the motion over there? So, it's plain.
I think we all know what we want to do. We just need to get, get the wording right.
Well, I missed what the last thing Art said after he said with the change recommended by Dan.
That would be with two entrances to the east onto Main Street maximum, and the existing entrance on E Street and D Street.
So, just what number two says.
Yeah. Well, except for the Main Street entrances, limit them to two, instead of consolidating two northern, because there's actually three northern. And there's also the other one on E Street that we just discovered, so. One entrance to the north off of E Street, one entrance to the south off of D Street, and consolidate the Main Street entrances on the east to a maximum of two.
Okay, that's pretty plain. Everybody got that? We good to go? We'll start the roll. You, John?
Aye.
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 Okay, and that passes, so we will move on. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Next on the agenda is our Wyscape Awards by Nicole Baker. And Nicole, you have the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thanks for having me here tonight to present on the Water Conservation Wyscape Award. I first want to briefly discuss the water production goals for the city of Moscow. In 1992, the groundwater management plan, in support with the Blue Space and Aquifer Committee, created voluntary goals for the city of Moscow. That included a 1%, allowed 1% pumping increase to have a cap at the 125% target, which is 875 million gallons. As you can see from this graph, we do meet our P-BAC goals. Here is a look at our monthly water use. As you can see, the months of May through October, we have a increase in water use. So, with this, the city of Moscow wanted to expand the conservation program to target some of this outdoor water use and to reduce that. In 2000, in 2008, we created the Wyscape Award Program. This Wyscape approach recognizes those in the community that save our water resources with their landscaping choices. So, if we think back, if we think back to that slide where we were looking at our water use, and it sometimes doubles in the summer months, obviously, the Wyscape approach, if we want to go ahead and incorporate this into our landscapes, we can save that water resource. In addition, the city does have regulations, and if you go with the Wyscape approach, you can help, it will help you to stay within compliance of those regulations. Here's a closer look at our water use. The baseline is considered our indoor water use. Anything above that black line can be considered outdoor water use. Here's a closer look at what that means to our resident. At the water department, we have our Wyscape demonstration garden. We have an irrigation meter for that, it's a little over 1,500 square feet. That irrigation meter tells me exactly what we are using for that Wyscape to maintain it. So, the green bar is our Wyscape actual use. That purple bar in the middle there would be traditional turf, maybe watering about one inch, one inch a week during the irrigation season. And then, the blue bar would be considered inefficient turf, watering about two inches during, a week during the irrigation season. Inefficient turf referring to perhaps systems that need to be maintained, or maybe they're watering, the customer's watering a dry spot, so therefore, they're overwatering other areas. As you can see from this, the Wyscape certainly used as much water that first year to establish it, but after that, the water use did significantly decrease with the Wyscape, and it does seem to be the normal trend when I do talk to the nominees, that by year three, it's pretty well-established. You're using less water, less resources, and they're not having to mow. 2012, we have a, you see, that's the lowest amount of water we've used at 2,600 gallons for that season. That was due to well nine being, there was a time during that summer where well nine was not available, so we didn't water at all. Here's a look at our billing rates for our residential customers. We have a three-tiered billing rate, and what this does is to perhaps motivate customers to use less water during the irrigation season. As you can see, when you go, when you, as you use more water, the cost of that water does go up. So, we're looking back to our demonstration garden, approximately that 1,500 square feet, and this time, we're looking at what it costs to maintain those gardens, or your, your traditional turf, for the city of Moscow during that irrigation season. So, this is not including the base rate, and it is also not including the, it's considering that the first 520 cubic feet are used for indoor water use. So, anything after that is what I put on this graph to show what it's costing you to maintain approximately 1,500 square feet during the irrigation season. And of course, that first year, we were establishing our Wyscape at the water department, so we certainly were in tier three, but every year after, we stayed within tier two and within good reason. So, as you can see, with the other traditional turf and inefficient turf, you're, you're maintaining in tier three, so you're paying a higher cost. I mentioned our regulations in the city of Moscow. We do have the irrigation ordinance and the water waste resolution. Both were created in 2004, 2007. We amended the irrigation ordinance to allow for an irrigation season that was specific to our climate. And then, the, there was also another change where we cannot water impervious surfaces. Another benefit would be with the diversity, you can bring in some urban wildlife, pollinators. A lot of people are interested in pollinators, so if you have your perennials and they're flowering, you're going to bring in a lot of different pollinators. So, everybody knows from the previous slides that a Wyscape is water-efficient landscaping. I was just going to briefly show you what that means as far as converting to a Wyscape, what our nominees have done, as well in their Wyscapes. Again, it was established in 2008. It considers the design, reduced resource use, soil and plant selection. With a Wyscape, you could potentially save up to 50% of your outdoor water use by converting from a traditional turf. We're going to once again talk about the water department. This picture was taken in 2008, and you can look at this picture and decide what is wrong here. Obviously, the spray heads are fine mist, which can't stand up against the pluise winds that we get. That equals watering the sidewalk. You, compact soil means you're going to have runoff. That also means watering the sidewalk. Compact soil means weeds, you have dry spots. So, if you look at this, it's not efficient. You're going to be using a lot of water, and it's still not going to necessarily look, you know, very pretty. So, Wyscape to the rescue. We decided to use techniques that we thought that was a reasonable techniques for the residents in Moscow to use. So, we rented a rototiller, we took out the turf, we added some compost. And these soil amendments are really important to start with a good base. I understand that not everybody is going to rototill and tear up what they have, but you can always add amendments even on top of, around plants. Having a healthy soil allows a better water retention. It equals healthy plants. Here's a design, this is from a past Wyscape nominee. Here's a design that just shows how you can have a variety. She has natives in here, there's adapted cultivars, you have walkways, so you can easily access plants, and you have the mulch that ties it all together. Here's a design from the U of I Arboretum. It's a more compact design. Going with a more compact design, you're, essentially, the plants you put there are going to out-compete the weeds, and so there, again, you're going to have less maintenance. Here's a more natural design where the, this is a picture of a newer landscape. There's room for these plants to grow. You also have a lot of rocks in this landscape. Rocks are excellent because you don't have to water them at all, and they require no maintenance. Also, you see there's some turf with this particular landscape, and it's strategically placed, so when that turf is watered, and if there is overspray, it's going to water the plants around the turf and not a sidewalk. Here's another consideration, whether you're going to redo your yard completely or just add plants, to make note of the microclimates. If you're on the southwest end of the house, that's where we see the sun and the wind. The north side is going to be shaded and cooler. Think about planting along sidewalks and driveways. Those plants are going to get a little bit more heat. They're also going to deal with, when you're shoveling snow, if you might be dumping that snow over to the side. Put plants together that have similar needs, and that way, that's less work and less time for you. And also, here, you see a little bit of turf in the center. There, again, when you water that turf, you're not ever going to be watering the sidewalk. So, speaking of watering, the right tool for the job, here, if you do need an overhead spray, here, we should see the rotary heads. Those can oftentimes do better with the pluise winds, and they also do deliver water at a slower rate, so you perhaps could avoid that runoff problem. Drip system is a great way to just deliver water to the roots. You're not watering plants, so there, you're not going to be weeding as much. And here, mulch is being applied, and that mulch is also going to reduce weeds and, as well as holding that, that water into the soil. So, finally, now, we had our 2014 Wyscape nominations. We had a few categories. I wanted to thank everybody that was nominated for allowing us to take pictures and share that with our community. I would also like to thank David Pierce for volunteering and taking the photos. Our first nominee was the Leta Library Public Facilities. This project was completed with the, with the help of several community members, and they donated their time and their resources. Another residential nominee is Jennifer's Wyscape advice is, take the time to put in your new Wyscape, because once it's in, there's practically no maintenance and no time needed to, and no time needed for it to flourish, and you don't even have to mow. In talking with Cindy Fisher, her motivation was conservation, the beauty of the Wyscape gardens at the U of I Arboretum, and her love of nature. Now retired, she is homeless often and glad that the plants tend to themselves. Another nominee is Delphine Keim. Her Wyscape is a great example of how to design plants around a turf area for efficient watering. Flowering perennials will also invite the pollinators. Marla's Wyscape takes no water at all, and it stays green throughout the seasons. And our last nominee for 2014 is the Sweeneys, and their Wyscape is another example of using less water and the mulch that adds that finishing touch that also suppresses weeds. So, after careful consideration, the mayor looked at all the nominees and decided on our featured nominees, and he'll go ahead and present that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Nicole. A very wonderful presentation is shared with all of us. And a neat thing about Wyscape, and I really like this, is it, because it's very, very attractive, and it's unique, because every one of them is different in their own subtle way around the houses, whether it's exterior, the landscape, the topography of the lots themselves. And so, this is kind of a fun award for me to be able to do, because I got a chance to just drive around and look at this stuff, and I really like it, so it's- just drive around and look at this stuff, and I really like it, so it's very, very good. And with that, I'll go on with the Public Library. There's several people here to, that need to be recognized. Mary McGregor, Leitau County Library Board. Also in attendance, Chris So-Call, the Director, Ivor Nelson, Trustee, Lynn McCrate, President of Friends in Moscow Library. And an additional thanks to Lareka Stauber, who led the Front Entry Project. Are all you folks here tonight, could you please come up here? We'd like to give you an award.
Thank God, Lareka Stauber.
Yeah. Thanks. You want to come a little farther? Let me get right smack at the middle. Okay, it's looking all cozy here, Chris, right up here. We're all friends, this is Wysscape.
The next is a residential, and this is Delphine Keim. Delphine, would you please come up here? One of the things when I drove by that I wanted to point out, when I went by Delphine's house, this is in a newer area, Conostoga, and it showed a perfect display of being able to blend in regular turf, as well as all the other aesthetic things that you did, as older section of our town, and so we've got these Wysscapes all over our entire city well as the pollinators that you mentioned, Nicole. I thought that was a, a pretty neat thing, so. in various spots. And you guys seen some of the displays that Nicole presented to us, and I like looking Anyway, Nicole came up with these very nice wind chimes. at things like this.
Nice, thank you.
I've got a chance firsthand to see a number of them, and I just think they're very nice. Nicole, thank you for the wonderful presentation you did tonight, okay?
And if I can conclude, if anybody needs some inspiration, we do have the demonstration garden at the Water Office, and I'm there. I love giving tours, so if I'm there, I would love to walk around. And also to remind everybody to please nominate for two thousand fifteen. Nominations are due by September fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole, for the very nice presentation.
Oh, I got a question. Since we're talking about Wysscapes, and specifically water, did you read the article
I love them. They make nice little noises and stuff when they're banging around. You talked about the pelouse breeze that we have around here.
in the Daily News?
Those things really work well.
Yes, I did.
It's interesting that since two thousand five to the last study of two thousand ten,
Okay, and then our third folks at one was John and Louise Sweeney.
that nationwide, we use thirteen percent less water, and that the average per capita
John and Louise, are you here with us this evening? Would you please come up here?
Hi.
use of water is eighty-eight gallons per day per person. That's good. Well, the bad news is, the state of Idaho is higher than any other state in the nation, with a per capita average of a hundred and sixty-eight gallons per person. Do you have any idea what it is for Moscow?
I do. If we just look at our Moscow customers, so I do need to specify the, the per capita water use for the Pelouse Basin is a different number. Steve Robichon can supply that. But for the city of Moscow, if we just look at the customers and the water we bill out, so we're not considering all water pumped, because that number changes as well, but we're around, around eighty.
Around eighty?
Yeah. Now, if you want to consider the green space and all water produced, it's around a hundred.
Okay, so we're much less than, we're close to that national average, and Moscow actually may be under it.
And in two months, I'll have those two thousand fourteen numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you again for a very nice presentation, Nicole. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number three, which is public comment and mayor's response time. We limit this usually to fifteen minutes. We let folks come up that want to talk to us on things that are not on tonight's agenda, or that is going before planning and zoning, or Board of Adjustments. But with that being said, there is somebody I want to recognize in our audience today, and that is Nathan Weller. And he is a Pullman City Councilor. Nathan, welcome to our council meeting. Would you like to come up and say a few words? Just for the fun of it, come up and introduce yourself, so folks can see who you are.
It's what you get for getting recognized.
We'll give you an award for something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't expect to come up here, but it's always good to be on the other side and seeing how everything's done. I'm extremely impressed, and nice and cozy in here. I'm just here because I really feel, and I believe that many of you may feel the same way, that cooperation between the two cities is extremely important. And so I'm here to show you that not only am I a U of I alum as well, but a fellow council member from just over the state. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Nathan. And the collaboration in our region is a big deal for all of us, and that's something that Glenn Johnson and I talk about frequently. And as one of the things, as soon as I became elected, I did an outreach, and Glenn did an outreach to me as well, and so it is a big deal for us. We need to work together in our region, because we're a region brand, and so that's something that we need to work on together. And I think these councils up here feel the same way. I'll let them speak, if they want to talk about anything here, while we're, Walter?
I guess I would have to ask Gary, is this, is this a first? I don't remember another council member coming to visit us just for the sake of coming.
I don't believe that's happened, but we've had Pullman City Council members here, but usually it's to address an agenda item.
Yeah, it was an agenda item or something like that. So Nathan, thank you so very much for coming.
Yep, I'm here for fun.
Wayne?
I serve with Nathan on the Pelouse Knowledge Corridor, and he and I have been kind of plotting and collaborating a little bit on the possibility of some of the council members getting together, and, and just kicking the, kicking the can down the road, so to speak, and discussing some things of mutual interest, certainly not making any decisions, because that's not really possible, but just seeing what common ground that there is between the two. And, you know, like, as, as the mayor said, you know, the collaboration and discussion of common interest items can only be a good thing. So thanks for coming, Nathan, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nathan.
Suppose that means now I gotta come to yours.
It does. Okay, at this time, I'd take other public comment, if folks would like to step forward. Okay, stand and rush to the podium. We're gonna move on to item number four, which is a public hearing on a proposed amendment of Title Four, Chapter Three, to allow residential uses within the commercial zoning district. Michael Ray, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Before you tonight, we have a legislative code amendment to amend Title Four, Chapter Three, and that's essentially to allow more residential uses within commercial zoning districts within the city. So just to give you a little bit of background, over the years, Community Development Department has received numerous inquiries regarding residential uses within commercial zones. We also had a two thousand thirteen council goal, which was to expand the perceived downtown area on Main Street from East Street to the South Cuplet, and that was through construction of streetscape improvements, as well as the evaluation of zoning and development standards within that corridor. And so the predominant zone is the motor business zone within that area. And we had taken a look at that, and really, a zone change to a different designation was gonna create too many non-conformities, especially for some of the significant investment that had happened in the area, Senex, as well as Han Rental. And so we thought that another maybe proposed amendment to the motor business zone would be appropriate in that circumstance, and that was to allow more residential uses. And so as part of this, we had researched four other municipalities. We had looked at Lewiston, Pullman, Coeur d'Alene, Missoula. We also reviewed other city commercial zoning districts, which would, you know, could potentially allow additional residential opportunities within those zones. And we had identified basically four zoning districts that could include more residential activity, neighborhood business, general business, motor business, as well as the industrial zoning district. And so looking at the proposed amendment before you tonight, within the neighborhood business zoning district, basically, we would be adding, under the permitted principal uses and structures, the, the language that currently exists is, it allows residential uses, including residential rental unit, provided that any dwelling located on the ground floor shall be located behind commercial uses, in a manner that would not interrupt commercial frontage. And then we had included a proposed part, basically to stay on the primary street, except as otherwise authorized herein. Residential uses may be allowed on the ground floor, on secondary street frontages of corner lots. And so the idea here is that you typically have a primary street, you know, especially in a neighborhood business zone, maybe Sixth Street. You have corner lots that are adjacent to Sixth Street, and they may be adjacent to another neighborhood street, which is predominantly residential. And this is something to allow, you know, those residential uses to be on the ground floor, since it is transitioning from the commercial frontage on a primary street to this sedentary street that's more residential. And so that's really the, the thought behind that amendment. Also wanted to provide the opportunity to have residential uses on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses, through a conditional use permit. And so that'd be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment where appropriate. Looking at the general business zone, essentially, we would create the same language that we had carried over from the neighborhood business zoning district, as long as they're not located on the ground floor, that would interrupt commercial frontage. We'd also include the provision in there, that if it's located on the ground floor, a secondary street frontage on corner lots, then residential uses would be permitted in that circumstance. Looking at accessory uses and structures, we would eliminate the current language that exists under the general business zone, that states that one dwelling, attached or detached, when such dwelling is customarily incidental to principal use and is located on the same principal use, same lot as the principal use, excuse me. Dwelling within a motel or hotel, or dwelling for a caretaker or watchman employed on the premises are examples of acceptable dwellings under this provision. And so with the inclusion of allowed residential uses within permitted principal uses, we would not need this section anymore, that, that basically allows one dwelling. Conditional uses, we would also include, right now, it's, the way you achieve residential uses within general business is through a conditional use permit process. So shifting those over to principally permitted, basically, we would just amend this portion, and residential uses that are located on the ground floor would be through a conditional use permit. Looking at the motor business zone, you know, once again, essentially carrying over the same language as the previous neighborhood business, as well as general business. Striking the language that has one dwelling for a caretaker or watchman. And the, the issue we run into with that current provision is that right now, it's arguable really when you need a caretaker or watchman on the premises. So obviously, they provide two examples, motel or hotel, where you'd need somebody to check people in, you know, as they're coming in in the odd hours of the night. There'd also be, you know, maybe another example of a veterinary clinic, where you'd need somebody there in an apartment to check on animals in the middle of the night. Really, it's, you know, arguable, the, kind of the big one we get is maybe a contractor's yard, where they're storing equipment, and they need somebody on site in order to, you know, be a watchman for that equipment. And so just really simplifying that, you know, mainly in the industrial zoning district, but, you know, that's just one of the challenges we run into with the, the current provision that talks about a watchman or caretaker employed on premise. Looking at conditional uses, once again, this would be allowed, allow residential uses on the ground floor, so long as they go through a conditional use permit process. Brings us to the industrial zoning district, looking at permitted accessory uses and structures, and these are accessory uses. Basically, bringing the current language of business offices incident to any permitted uses, provided it's located on the same site as the principal building, and also adding a portion under there, under accessory uses, to allow one dwelling unit per lot where accessory to a permitted principal use. And previously, you know, a conditional use with a dwelling for a caretaker or watchman employed on premise. So basically, just allowing that by right, just one dwelling, and striking a conditional use permit in order to achieve that. Planning and zoning commission did conduct a public hearing on October twenty-second, and at which time, the commission unanimously recommended approval to City Council. Staff's recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony received, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and then it be read by title and published by summary. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Questions from Michael, before I open it up to public testimony? Dan?
Let's look at some, some possible examples. Say, you know, Walgreens. I mean, if they, if they wanted to have a resident, this, they would be allowed to have a residential use there, or say, you know, I'm just trying to pick, you know, several different types of things, or, or like the offices out there at Alturis, you know, or, what's another one that's completely different, like a, a car dealer, dealership, or something like that. Would, would those three types of businesses be able to, to take advantage of this?
Yeah, as long as they were in the appropriate zone with these proposed changes. You know, typically, right now, in a motor business zone, they'd have to go through the plan unit development process, and that's a public hearing, a little substantial investment in elevation, you know, building elevations, site plan, floor plans, and then, you know, really no knowledge of whether it was gonna be approved or denied when you got to that public hearing process level. And so right now, it'd be similar to Anytime Fitness, right? You know, right next to Walgreens, they had to go through a PUD in order to achieve the eight apartments that they had constructed on top when they did the remodel from the old sandpiper. And so this would be allowing that by right, in order, you know, instead of having, having to go through that kind of unpredictable process of a, a public hearing to achieve something that really we want.
Well, that's the perfect example right there, basically.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a wonderful use. Wayne had a.
Well, and that was exactly what the example I was going to bring up, is when the owner bought that property, and he had to go through a lot of, jump through a lot of hoops, get a PUD cleared, and now that could be done by right, if this is passed.
Walter?
Mike, Dan brought up Alturis. Alturis is an RTO zone, right?
Correct.
Are you proposing this change for RTO zones?
No.
I don't think that RTO was included, was it?
Okay, so.
No, it's neighborhood business, motor business, general business, industrial.
When you mentioned Alturis, that's not included.
That would not be included.
Okay.
All right, you had.
That was exactly what I was gonna ask.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mike, before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Mike. We will open the public hearing right now, and I would take testimony for anybody that is in favor. You can come up and state your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind. Seeing nobody rush to the podium, I will open testimony for general testimony or opposed to this. If somebody would like to come forward, they may. This is making it awful easy on these guys up here, everybody, so we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Council Wayne.
I'm really glad to see this come through. We looked at it in admin, and kind of picked it apart just a little bit. It's the same, we, we made no recommendations, other than to move it forward, and.
bought that property, and he had to go through a lot of, jump through a lot of hoops, get a PUD cleared, and now that could be done by right, if this is passed.
Walter?
Mike, Dan brought up Alturis. Alturis is an RTO zone, right?
Correct.
Are you proposing this change for RTO zones?
No.
I don't think that RTO was included, was it?
Okay, so...
No, it's neighborhood business, motor business, general business, and industrial.
When you mentioned Alturis, that's not included?
That would not be included.
All right, you have it.
That was exactly what I was going to ask.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mike before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Mike. We will open the public hearing right now, and I would take testimony for anybody that is in favor. You can come up and state your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind. Seeing nobody rushed to the podium, I will open testimony for general testimony or opposed to this. If somebody would like to come forward, they may. This is making it awful easy on these guys up here, everybody, so we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Council Wayne.
I'm really glad to see this come through. We looked at it in admin and kind of picked it apart just a little bit. It's the same, we made no recommendations other than to move it forward, and this is a real, a real common sense change to Title Four. I really like it, and I think it'll be, you know, bring some very positive things to the business areas. So, without further ado, I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings to be read by title and published by summary. Second?
Okay, Wayne made a motion to approve the ordinance and the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary, and John Weber seconded that motion. I will start the roll with Art. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Allow it to be known, it was gone by unanimous. Thank you very much. Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, that takes us to the end of our agenda.
Your Honor, you do need to read the title of the ordinance.
Oh, sorry. You know what, I even had that...
Thought you were gone, didn't you?
Just thought you were done.
I even had it wrote down here, folks, and I had it earmarked right there. What is it, 2014?
Nineteen.
Okay. Ordinance, 2014-19, an ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation in the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of the Moscow City Code Title Four, Chapter Three, a Moscow City Code to allow residential uses within commercial zoning districts, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Thank you, Stephanie. With that, I'm going to move on to reports, and I think I'll go to Dan first because last week, we had the admin, and you were, Walter was gone, and so you chaired it, so...
chaired Public Works Finance.
Oh, public, I'm sorry, Public Works Finance.
And we pretty much covered everything except for single stream recycling, which, you know, we're going to see that on December 1st, when Tim gets well, and, you know, there, we looked at, we asked for a few more options in the RFP, just so we knew where everything would stand as far as, you know, the pricing, if different options, we're going to price things out of, you know, out of our reach, or if we should just go with one size fits all. So, look forward to seeing that come forward to us in next month. And then, after that, on the 4th, I met with the tree commission, and there was some talk about the, what kind of street trees we're going to be going in, out there in front of the old Daily News building, and with the new sidewalk replacement there. And if the trees are going to go back in, we're further down Jackson there by the new Jimmy Johns down by Sixth Street, so we're looking, you know, hopefully, we can fit something in there, but I don't know with the width of that sidewalk. Then on the 9th, I looked at the wrong thing there. Actually, the 6th, November 6th, we met, found out we were meeting in the Water Department Conference Room after several of us waited in here for the meeting to start, for the Transportation Commission. Talked about the White Avenue-Mountain View intersection, there's been some rumblings that folks would like a four-way stop there, and we're talking about identifying the Third Street Corridor as a bike route, and maybe there would be some potential identification marks, kind of like the sheroes on Main Street, but, you know, other types of bicycle-specific, what do we call it less, striping, and, you know, basically, there's a lot of folks that ride their bikes, and they turn left right there, just below the high school on to Jefferson Street, so, you know, trying to figure out a way to make that all work without anybody getting hurt, so. They also talked about the commission fair, which was supposed to be November 12th, but has been postponed till after the 1st of the year, and bicycle parking down there during the farmer's market, which a lot of that is blocked up by the market happening, so looking to see what we can do to help that out. Other than that, that's all the reports I have.
Okay, John, I'll go to you next.
I've got two. I've got the planning and zoning, and I'd like to put in a plug for planning and zoning on the issue that we just voted for. They discussed that very thoroughly, came to the same conclusion that the council did, and they hit all the high points and all the low points on the whole process. I think they did a very credible job on just investigating the whole thing. And then, with the meeting that we had on, or that they had on November 12th, they spent a fair amount of time reviewing the alternate front yard setback requirement draft amendment, having to do mostly with the stuff on North Main Street, and where you've got some businesses and some buildings that are right up to the property line, and others that are back as much as thirty feet, and how do you deal with that if there's going to be a change? And that was discussed, and some questions were asked, and some directions were given to the city planning department, and they're going to bring that back. They also reviewed the light manufacturing standards within the city, and that brought in some really spirited comments, but for the most part, the planning and zoning commission wants to see some of the light manufacturing standards, I think, increased a little bit, added to other zones, and make it so that if someone does bring in something that is considered light manufacturing, it will have a less arduous time on getting through the process. That's about all they had, and then we did, last week, a urban renewal meeting, and I think they, one of the big things there was Gary, who was doing the temporary job as the urban renewal director, along with other city staff, took us through the property sales process that the city has to use when we're divesting ourselves or selling a piece of property. It's quite a bit different than you're going to find if you're just buying one piece of property from one private seller to another.
You mean, John, what the URA has to use?
Yes, what the URA, I'm sorry, yeah, the URA has got, and there, again, that's time-consuming, but that's state law, and that's what we have to do. And then, Gary said that the city is now starting, once again, to advertise for a new URA halftime director, city of Moscow halftime business or economic development coordinator. That process is going to start again next week, I think.
Hopefully.
And then, we had some discussion about Legacy Crossing, the Sixth and Jackson property as far as what is happening there, and what could possibly go there, and the brown field cleanup that has to be done there, which will hopefully be done this spring, and if we can get someone interested, we will start the process of the sale, and hopefully, the sale and the brown field remediation will come together at the same time. And that is about it, and that's all I have.
Okay, John. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, I was not in town for the Public Works Finance. Appreciate Dan filling in for me as chair, and Wayne is filling in the seat. On Friday, this past Friday, Gary, the mayor, myself, and Bill Belknap went up to Hayden Lake for the Inland Northwest Partner Winter Meeting, and heard a representative from the Southeast Idaho Economic Development Group in Twin Falls talk about the successes they have had in bringing in very, very large employers. The interesting thing that I got out of it, among others, was that they didn't find the employers, the employers found them, because of certain reasons and things that they had been able to make known and get out there. In that vein, we had a meeting at noon today with the Branding, our community group, about fourteen of us, Steering Committee met with the BHW One Consultants out of Spokane. We looked at creating, revising a new name for the group. I will let the group put that name out, but I can just say that we're on the cusp of something large, I think, here, something big. We also heard from Greg Burchill and Michelle Morin-Machi talking about the proposed process, the timeline, asked for some input on a few items, but it was a very good one-hour meeting, got in and got out. Back on the 12th of November, I attended the ICrimp, the risk management presentation to city employees here in these chambers regarding driving safety. By doing that, as part of the process, we've got to reduce our insurance fees with ICrimp. The room was packed, and I think they did another session that afternoon, primarily talking about intersection, intersections and cars, and bicycles, and pedestrians, and things. And that's all I have.
Okay, Wayne?
On the 13th of the morning, Pluse Knowledge Corridor meeting, and a couple of topics of discussion. One is the Open Oro Boot Camp, and I'm happy, very happy to be able to announce that they have landed a major sponsor for the 2015 Boot Camp. So, that's already in the planning. It looks like it's going to be bigger and better than it was this last year. It's going to be very successful. And they also discussed, we also discussed the business showcase that was held at the Fairview Inn last month, and while it wasn't attended as heavily as we would like to have seen, it was still a successful program. One of the challenges that we have is that when we put it on in Moscow, only Moscow people come to it, and when we put it on in Pullman, where it will be next spring, only Pullman people come to it. So, we kind of got to get, get everybody on board with that. And then, that afternoon, I met with the Historical Preservation Commission, and they're just having some general discussions on plaques for heritage trees, which is actually a tree commission project. The Civilian Conservation Corps Original Camp in Southeast Moscow, which I found kind of interesting, it's one of the original CCC camps, and the old Chinese Village, that building and the plantation were actually buildings that were utilized in that camp. So, there's some discussions going on there. Fort Russell Recusal Survey Report, Idaho Heritage Conference being held in Moscow this coming summer, were also discussed, and they're well on the way to fruition. And then, right after that one, I had a day, an evening meeting with the Leighton Economic Development Council. As you know, I've reported that they are in the process of looking for three-quarter time executive director. The interview committee interviewed half a dozen candidates, they selected one, gave them a planning scenario to present. So, we had a dinner at the University Inn with the LEDC, this young man that was chosen, gave his plan on a, on a not-so-fictitional but possible land development deal, and some of the hurdles that he'd have to go over in order to be able to make it happen. And at that time, we then took a straw vote, don't know how the vote came out, as to whether to accept him as executive director or not, and, but the hiring committee itself will be looking at that. It was an advisory vote by the LEDC, the hiring committee will make that final choice, and that's what I have.
Okay. Art?
No meetings of the Sustainable Environment Commission or Paradise Path, Paradise Path Task Force. They actually both meet tomorrow, head to tail. Sustainable Environment's going to be looking at a first glimpse at the new water conservation plan, and also, in conjunction with the law school, University of Idaho Law School in Boise, taking a look at greening up the city code, so it should be a very good meeting for them tomorrow at seven o'clock right here. And just prior to that, the Paradise Path Task Force is also meeting, so I'll have something to say two weeks from now.
Okay. Well, as Walter had earlier stated, on the 14th, there was four of us that went up to the Northwest Partners.
There was actually a fifth, but he was sitting with the Leighton County.
Yep, and I'm going to mention that. Commissioner-elect Tom Stro, or, Tom, Tom Lamar was with Tom Stroshine, as well as Dave McGraw, so he was there as well, and that was a pretty interesting meeting. It was pretty, there was a lot of information on that. And as Walter said, today, we also met, and we had a luncheon at Branding meeting that we talked about. And on the 19th, I've got an airport board meeting coming up, so here in two days that I'll report to on our next council meeting. Gary, how about you? You got anything you want to add?
Sir, I've got nothing this week.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, folks, at 8:05.